Call the meeting to order at 7:04. We're gonna rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, and to the one nation in which we stand. Thank you, everybody. Okay, I'm gonna start with a motion to approve the agenda with a couple of additions.
Yes.
Anybody want to make that motion?
Well, let's get the additions first.
Oh, okay, the additions are under superintendent, search update. We're going to talk about approving the contract. We've gotten, so approval of the contract for the new superintendent. And under transact other legal business?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna talk about an LPN position for the remainder of this year.
And one thing that I noticed that I left off, but I think we were aware of, board member resignation. Can we put that right after board member appointment?
Approval.
Do those two right back to back?
Okay.
Okay.
So there's three changes.
Okay.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
Like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the aforementioned additions.
Thank you, Ned.
And can we get a second? Sarah? Can't hear you though, Sarah. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? I wish they could all be together. Is there a way to put them all together so I know?
I wish.
All right.
Is Lynn on?
I don't see Lynn.
There's Lynn.
Oh, there you are, Lynn.
Great.
Okay.
I was just making sure I wasn't missing. Okay.
All right, so, um, so I wanted to, okay, so we're gonna move to board member, oh, wait.
Yep.
We voted, right? Board member update and resignation. So let's start with the resignation. We already have one vacant position, and we have received a letter from Doug Earl, who will be retiring from the board. And I do want to take a few minutes to thank Doug for over forty years of service. And we've made, we've gotten a little plaque, which I will deliver to Doug. And I don't know if anybody, you know, who's worked with Doug wants to say a couple of words. I mean, I will say that I've known, I've known Doug as a member of the board, not as much as my being a member of the board, but as him being, I guess I'm sort of out of order here, but as always being so supportive of our staff and our students when he was a member of the board, and that's how I remember him. But anyway, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Doug Earl from the school board. Do you want to make it, or?
I'll make a motion to accept Doug Earl's resignation from the school board.
And is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'll say, I'll echo everything Carol said. Doug was a great guy when he, serving on the board. He has cared a lot about our schools and has always, you know, in my opinion, come to the table looking for ways he can support our schools.
And if I could, I just think Doug's work, particularly on buildings and grounds, was tremendous. You know, he was on the board at Clarendon back in the day when we had separate boards at every single school, and then became a member when we consolidated. And his focus was always, number one, on the kids. He did a tremendous amount of work in Clarendon for the kids there, and supporting them. And then just the amount of work that he did on his own in terms of buildings and grounds, I think, is, was amazing. So I thank him for that. And I would, well.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay.
And Karen.
With regret.
Yeah.
With regret, I was, I was gonna say, yeah, regretfully.
So then board member appointment?
Okay, so, as, so we now have two vacant positions, both from Clarendon. The Clarendon Select Board on, at their last meeting, has, are gonna wait, they, they're keeping the positions open for two weeks, which means at their April 11th meeting, they will then make their, have input basically to us as to members of the community that they would recommend. And I've received two inquiries for the two positions. So that, what I'm hoping is they'll send their recommendations on the 11th, and then we will then have the opportunity to appoint the two members at our April 16th meeting. Does anybody have any questions about that, or does that all make sense?
And, and we do have one of the individuals here this evening who has put their name in, Rich Clark.
Wallingford.
Well, we'll get there, we'll get there.
Oh, yeah. Wallingford, yeah. I mean, from Clarendon, Rich Clark is here. And then, you must be Dave.
Yep.
And Dave is here, and so he's here for us to make a motion, right?
The Wallingford Select Board had opportunity to meet and discuss folks had put, who had put forward interest in filling our Wallingford vacancy. They have recommended that David fill that position. So the board this evening, you know, in consultation with the Select Board, as statute requires, within thirty days of the vacancy being created, the board tonight can appoint a member. So somebody would need to make that motion to appoint David Cornwall to the vacant Wallingford seat.
I'll make the motion to appoint Dave.
Cornwell.
Cornwell.
I'm sorry.
For the vacancy and for the Wallingford seat to the school board.
Okay. So is there a second? Oops, Josh.
Josh, we'll go to Josh.
Yeah. Any discussion?
Yeah, I didn't hear the last name before.
Cornwell, right?
Yes.
Thank you for your letter to the board, and we're not all usually remote like this.
Yeah, it's not.
No, it's you and Rick.
Yeah.
All right.
The weather was a little sketchy, so I think people stayed home. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, I think it's unanimous. Okay. Welcome, Dave. So you are gonna get sworn in by the town clerk, and we'll expect to see you at our April 16th meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. All right, so, public input and announcements. Do we have any public input? Rich, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I would just like to take a minute and introduce myself. I submitted a letter for one of the vacancies to be considered by the Select Board and by you all for the, one of the Clarendon open places. I'm Clarendon resident, thirteen years, Knights Drive up the road, and two children who came through Mill River, graduated fifteen and seventeen. And the, I'm a educator myself. I teach at Castleton University, where I've been for, like I said, the past thirteen years. And prior to that, at University of Georgia, University of Connecticut, my whole life has been in education. My basic philosophy is, is that education can be transformational, and I really want to, now that my kids are grown and I have more time there to be able to do more in the community and contribute more, and so I'm hoping to, to be able to step in should you all have me. Thank you.
Great, thank you for, thank you for coming.
Anybody online?
Anybody online with public comment? No, I think. Okay. Thank you all. Let me see. Any discussion of public comment?
I guess I just have a question. Do we know which position these folks are applying for? Because one is a three-year, basically, and the other one is a one-year, I think.
They both would have to run again, so I think Rich got his letter in first, so I would think he would, I call them Clarendon one and Clarendon two, so Andrea's seat would be one. And then the other applicant sent a letter, and so that would be Doug's position, which became vacant tonight.
That's fine, I'm just saying there, I know they're gonna have to run again for reelection, but.
Are they both?
Andrea's position.
Is it three years?
Is three years.
Yeah.
So that goes for three, two more, three more years.
And I do think, I do think we do need to be mindful of which person you're appointing to which one, because they'll both run again, but the person who takes Andrea's seat would run again to finish two years on the three-year. So the, the number of years they're elected for is gonna be different based on the one they're appointed to.
Correct.
If that makes sense.
Okay, okay. That, I guess that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So they'll both have to.
Run again.
Run reelection next year.
No matter what.
No matter what.
No matter what.
They're only appointed to the next.
Either for a three-year position or a one-year position, whatever it is.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, good, good clarifying question.
Yeah, no, that is a good question. All right, let's see. So now we're gonna do approval of the minutes. So I need a motion to approve the minutes from, do you want to do them separately or together? Let's do them separately. Approve the minutes from 3/7/25, that was the special meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting from March 7th.
Thank you, Ned, and a second. Josh? Okay, any corrections or discussion about those? Okay? All in favor? All right, I think we got everybody. And then approval of the minutes from 3/19/25, our last board meeting. Motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the March 19th meeting.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, great. Any changes, additions, deletions? Okay, all in favor? All right. Thank you. Bronson, you're next.
Hello, for all the changes in the board, I am Bronson Patch. I'm a senior here at Mill River. I'm seventeen, and I don't know, I'm going off to college in the fall, hope to become an aerospace engineer. Any questions about me?
Where are you going?
Uh, we don't know yet.
Oh, okay.
I'll tell you next board meeting.
Okay, great, can't wait. You can't wait.
Cool. So, we'll start with theater. I'm a member of the Stage Forty Company, I'm on the board of directors for it, so group of six, we make, decide most of the decisions. I'd like to thank you for the new light board. The last one, I believe, is original to the school, I think, is what I heard, which is crazy. But it crapped out earlier this year, and we just hosted regionals with a new light board, and it went swimmingly. Technically, went swimmingly. So thank you for that. As I said, we hosted regionals. Mill River and Otter Valley made it to states, so.
Congratulations.
I'll be very excited. Thank you. Yeah, so we'll be going up to St. Albans next weekend, and all crossing our fingers. And we also had our school presentation of the play today, and I believe we had about forty or fifty kids sign up to come down during flex and watch the whole show, because it's only fifteen minutes long. Because one act. It's only, has to be under an hour, in case you don't know. Okay, next, music. We had Bistro last weekend, which, in case you don't know, it's all the high school honors vocal ensembles. We go to the Westfalen Town Hall, and we put on two hour-long performances. We all get dressed up, we all match. All the cleft guys, we all wore sagebean suspenders and a new tie, and all the girls got rose blush dresses, and we all looked great. And we had, I believe, about two-hundred-and-fifty guests over the two shows. Now I'm great. Next Wednesday is the band concert, spring band concert. Hope to see you all there. Seven PM, I believe. It's gonna be great, and the ending is gonna be fun, because we're gonna play, there's gonna be special ending. Yeah, question?
You said that was Tuesday?
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah, the ninth, I believe. After that, marching season's coming up, hope to see all the parades, it's gonna be great. Mill River, as you should know, we, when there's competitions at the parades, we always win best marching band, because we have a phenomenal music program. And then coming up in a while, beginning of May, I believe, is the all-state festivals. And we always, we're sending a lot of kids this year, more than last year, and we always have one of the best representations, which is especially cool considering it's all of the state, and we're not one of the biggest schools, but we are very musically gifted. Next, student council is hosting the spring carnival on April 16th, four-thirty to seven. It's gonna be great, it's for the whole community. There's gonna be a dunk tank and tables from most of the school clubs. Hope to see you there. I believe it's right before meeting, so you should all already be here. So.
Oh, is that the sixteenth?
The sixteenth, yeah.
Bummer is, we'll be at Wallingford, tentatively.
Okay, eight minutes away?
Yeah.
Starts at four-thirty still. All right, spring sports just started last week. I don't know much about the other sports, but I play ultimate, and it's going great. We became a varsity sport three, my freshman year, so three or four years ago, depending on how you count it. And now we have, I believe it's over thirty kids. We have a varsity and a JV team. It's going great, and the team's looking good, we're gonna, we're gonna win this year. Not that I'm betting, but we're gonna win. Next, something that's embarrassing. I don't know how you guys get in, the front vestibule, there's a drip, and we're always talking of, or you guys are always talking about how you want to attract more students. That's the front of the building, and walking in and seeing a broken ceiling is bad, and I would expect it would turn away any shadow students. So if you could get that fixed, that'd be great. I assume buildings and grounds or whatever.
That's a known problem that they've been working on.
All right. Well, yeah, it's been a problem like my whole high school career, that the front vestibule is always beeping, or there's lights, or, there's always been a problem, every year there's been an issue. So maybe have someone look at that, I don't know, what have you guys got to do? But whatever the fix has been before was not good enough for the new board members. Well, for everyone. But yeah, it's.
B and G.
Yeah, every year it's been, I think last year it was flashing lights, the year before it was beeping. This year it's beeped too, and there's, now there's a drip and a bucket. Next, class scheduling. I'm not as involved with this as I have been in previous years, because I don't have to schedule my classes here for next year. And as I've gotten through the grades more, there's been less options, because I've taken the classes already. I don't really need to take integrated two again. But what I've been hearing from some of my younger friends, especially the freshman class, they're here, some of them sometimes, and just stuff I've heard from Dr. Robinson talking about his continuous improvement plan and switching around positions and teachers and classes. There's, overall, it's really good. If you want to take a look at it, the science pathway is kind of funky, and I feel like it doesn't really, it's not as set as all the other pathways. Like, when I was a freshman, it was you take physics, then chemistry, then bio, then if you want, your senior year, you take, there's a couple electives for you to choose from, or AP environmental. For all the, for the three other core subjects, and language, we'll get to that in a minute. There's, like math, there's a very good structure, you start, there's the honors track, the regular track, you can mix it up a little bit. And then the terminus is AP Calc AB or AP Stats, you can take them together. That's always fun, because they're two, they're back-to-back blocks, and it's great. Highly recommend calc and then stats, it's great. But like, there's, the college board offers, I believe, four different physics AP classes, AP Chemistry, AP Bio, and AP Environmental. Of those, we only have AP Environmental. And this year, I could be wrong, I don't believe we offer physics.
Correct.
Which is really sad and kind of weird, because I, this I do know about, when I was applying to colleges this fall, I want to be an engineer, as I said. They, the engineering colleges, or the engineering departments of colleges, they really want you to take physics, and I mean, as you all probably know, they say if you don't take the class, because your school doesn't offer it, that's fine, but also if your school offers it and you take it, I feel like that's better. Like, nobody.
Good news, we have a science hire later in the meeting.
I heard that. I heard Dr. Robinson was talking about that, that they want to act it as an elective next year. That's a good step, you should make it mandatory again, or part of the standard pathway, if not absolutely required, because physics is great. And there's also four different options for you to choose if you want to have AP Physics. And it really, science is important, as I think we can all agree. Next, language. Language is going good. I am the, kind of the guinea pig this year for the AP French program, and I hear next year they're planning on beefing it up, having it possibly be its own class, or they're still thinking about it, or combined with French IV. I would like to thank Madam Cook for the opportunity for being my independent study teacher, and I'd just like to say, that's going great, language, it's great. Trouble is, you take AP French after French IV and Spanish II, but I take French, so I'm gonna talk about that. And Russian, I'd assume. I don't know if they have AP Russian, though.
They do, actually.
They do have AP, all right, then all three of them.
It exists.
You take it after French IV. There's four years of high school, so whatever you want to do, get kids started earlier. When I was in elementary school, we had Mrs. Gregan teaching us Spanish. Maybe when the budget's a little more loose, look at more elementary school language, because, I mean, I, I haven't looked at them, but I'm sure Mr. Hale, you know the studies of.
Well, and we actually, we added that to the budget last year, and we tried to hire for that, and we kept it open all year, and we had no applicants, unfortunately, which was, you know.
Well, please keep trying, because it's very important. Last, I is gonna be a little bit vague, because it's not a specific instance I can really talk about, it's more just a general vibe in the school, is that sometimes the administration feels like there's a little unnecessary bureaucracy, and like, the way some of my teachers have put it, is not specifically this administration, but in the past, they've said, some of the administration have said things, and then when they asked, why should I do that? They said, because I said so. A lot of you are educators, that's a stupid reason for anything, generally, and no one likes hearing that when they said, and, and also, like, so it's, there's a lot of, it feels like there's a lot of red tape, when there, where there shouldn't be and doesn't need to be. Also, like, sometimes, part of being in a small school, it's nice, I know, like, all the teachers and all the staff, and most of the other seniors do, and juniors and sophomores, because we've been here, my sophomore year, it's your fourth year here, you know everybody, because there's not that many people. So it's, feels weird handing, like, filling out a super-long form to just hand it to, like, this is not about her, but most forms, would go to Ms. Patrick. She knows me, she knows my plan, like, it just seems like there's a lot of bureaucracy where there doesn't need to be.
Is that something student council could look at? If you have a student council that could maybe talk about that with the administration? That seems like something.
Talk about that, but you're their bosses, and it's a lot more powerful coming from you.
Well, yeah, but we don't, we don't run the schools, Bud.
Yeah, but they.
We don't run the schools, they run the schools, so.
But when we talk to them about things, they give us really fake answers, and like, which is part of it. They say, we ask them a question, and they give a long-winded answer to a different question.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, we had a couple meetings, and they didn't feel very fruitful.
Okay, it's frustrating.
Yeah. That's the end of my spiel. Any questions, comments, concerns? Am I wrong?
I, I have a question, Bronson.
Yeah.
So how do, so you're graduating.
Yes, hopefully.
So how does the next student rep, I think, yeah.
Yeah, well, if I pass weight training, I'm good.
Looking at mom, she's like, you better be. So how does the next student rep get chosen? And when does that happen? Do you know the logistics of that at all? Or does anybody know? I don't.
Typically, you, you can explain how you were selected.
I was selected because Ms., Mrs. Thompson, Ms. Thompson, sent out an email to all the advisories two years ago, at the beginning of the year, saying, hey, anyone that wants to be a scored rep, email me, stop at my office, tell me, send a smoke signal, whatever. And I thought it was very well broadcast, like, I think everyone heard about it, I was the only applicant, because not many, I was the only one that wanted to do it, but that's fine.
Everybody else stepped back, and you were left.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then this year, Dr. Robinson, being kind of new, being his first year, he just, I think Ms. Thompson told him I was the guy, and he asked me, do you want to do it again? I said, sure.
And we typically have folks serve, if they start as a junior, as a senior, because I think that continuity is, is useful.
So the principal would, so.
Yeah, and in, in the past, even, even previous to Ms. Thompson, we had folks who would, you know, maybe in an assembly, explain to the junior class and the senior class, because in the past, we've actually had two reps, and we've tried to do like a junior and a senior. So then you have some continuity, but somebody new every year. So they'll, in the past, had done an assembly with the junior class or the senior class to kind of explain what it is, so that folks know what they're getting into. So that's definitely something that we would work with Dr. Robinson on, identifying some folks next year.
Okay, perfect. All right. All right, moving on.
Cool, I'm going.
Thank you, Bronson.
Thank you, Bronson.
I got an early plate to catch tomorrow, so I'm trying to get to bed.
Fair enough.
Have a good one.
Stan's on, and maybe we'll hear footsteps in a minute, because we have.
The E1 audit.
Audit next.
Which was in your packet, if you guys, I don't know if you're looked at it. I think it basically said they're doing a good job, but.
No substantial findings, which is always good news.
Yeah.
Here comes Stan.
Hey, Stan.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. You know, we're busy, busy night.
You know, we finally got our audit done. This is the audit for 2024, so it's been a while, you hadn't come here back in September, and.
So this is last year's.
Yeah, this is last year, so this is past news, but I'll give you a quick synopsis. You received two letters from them, basically stating about how they conducted the audit. The other letter was a color management letter, which had any suggestions they might have had from the results of their audits. We have two audits done, basically, every year. One is a financial, a financial audit, which is an audit of the whole district, and the other is a single audit, which is an audit of all our federal grant programs. The single audit, that was a clean audit, no findings. That's what you kind of shoot for, because you don't want to have any, any findings in that report, because that could affect your going out and getting federal money. The financial audit, again, that was a clean audit. There was one finding that they had, that is not, is not considered a material, material finding, but a, you know, a suggestion for us to, to do something, to clean something up that would make our financial operations cleaner and better. In the management letter, that stated, it was in regards to our outstanding checklist, they felt that our outstanding checklist had gone to the point where there was too many old checks still that had not cleared the bank, so they want us to investigate that, as to whether or not those checks can be concluded as either reissued or avoided. If we cannot find a conclusion to this, then we would have to write a check to the treasurer's office, the Vermont State Treasurer's Office, for that amount of money to go to their fund where it's unclaimed property. So we're currently working on, working on those now. To give you an idea of what the amounts we're talking about, we're not talking great amounts. In the general fund operating expenses, I think it's a little over eleven thousand dollars, and I'll hold outstanding checks. And payroll, which is a little over six thousand. Most of the payroll, we've been able to easily identify and get those cleaned up. It's on the other side that we'll have to figure out whether or not those checks were still, still valid. You know, it's on the other side that we'll have to figure out whether or not those checks were still, still valid.
So, like, paying vendors, then?
Yes, so paying vendors. The payroll is much easier, because you can track, most of them were employees that get small checks, or in case of a couple where there was numerous checks that got lost, for whatever reason, but they never contacted us to get a check reissued.
Wow.
Uh, don't know if anybody, uh, I do want to mention one other thing. Uh, the complete, uh, report will be on our website. So if anybody wants to take a look, you can just go to the website under the business office, and you'll find, there'll be actually numerous years' reports, but that one will be up, uh, probably tomorrow. Other than that, does anybody have any questions?
Anybody?
Hey, thank you.
Okay. Alright, I'm sorry, I'm looking for. Alright, got it. Alright, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, in regards to our superintendent search update. And as the board knows, um, we had, um, offered a contract to Cheryl Gonzalez, and she accepted it. And today, I got the letter from, um, uh, the Secretary of Education, saying that the Agency of Education has completed the statutory background check processes required for superintendent applicant Cheryl Gonzalez. I support Ms. Gonzalez hiring as superintendent with this advice, and Ms. Gonzalez, having completed the statutory background check processes of Chapter Five of Title 16 of the Vermont statutes, um, the Mill River Unified Union School District may proceed with the hiring of Cheryl Gonzalez as superintendent. So, um, I would need a motion, um, to, um, for, of the board to approve the contract, so that I can sign it and Cheryl can sign it.
I move to.
I move that we accept the, uh, we offer contract Cheryl Gonzalez.
Okay, and second?
A second.
Ned's seconded. Any, um, discussion? Okay. Um, alright, all in favor? Okay, and Cheryl was on, oh, Cheryl, you're on. Congratulations, welcome aboard. We'll be in touch.
Thank you very much. That's great news.
Okay. Um. Okay. Committee membership. I, I know we have that on the agenda.
I, I think it would be reasonable to talk to David real quick and see if there are any things he's interested, since he's here.
Okay, well, I, I kind of went.
He's not a board member officially till he's sworn in, but he can tell you, you know, the board can take action if they choose. So, just an option.
Yep.
You don't have to.
So, we kind of plugged you in to where, um, Nick was, right?
Yeah, we had some spaces, and I can put that up on the screen if that.
I have it. So it would be policy, personnel, and negotiations. Now, negotiations is that kind of getting near the end, right? More the end. I'm asking maybe Josh if you can, um, so I don't know how much.
We're still negotiating.
Still negotiating. When I say the end, it's the end of the year, but I don't know what that means.
We're further along in the process than we're not. How about that?
Yeah, something like that. And, um, yeah, so if you're okay, that would be personnel, policy, and negotiations, and I'll let the chairs of those committees.
Personnel, policy, and negotiations is one committee or three?
Three committees.
That's fine, sure.
Well, yeah, we're trying to get, I, we're supposed to have, right?
The other, the other three, David, just for your awareness, Buildings and Grounds, Community Engagement, Finance. And that makes up the six committees we have.
Right.
Negotiations, personnel, and policy are fine.
Okay. Alright. Um, so we'll plug you in those, your name in those, and then as we move along with the Clarendon.
Uh, we will need a motion to add him.
Okay. Do we want to do that now, or?
Actually add?
Yes, because he's been.
Have we approved him as?
Yes, we have done that.
He's just not sworn in yet, so.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll accept a motion to add Dave to those three committees that I just mentioned.
I'll make the motion to add Dave Cornwell to those three committees, negotiations, personnel, and policy.
Thank you. Is there a second? I think Sarah put her hand up.
I second.
Yeah, okay, Sarah, thank you. Um, any discussion? I just tried to go through all the committees, because it's just, it got kind of confusing for me, and instead of doing it, that's great, because we can see who's on the committees, but I just want to go through, because, like, Gray was on four. So, I think, alright, so I have Ned, you're on Building and Grounds, Community Engagement, and Finance. Gray, I have you on Building and Grounds, Finance, and Policy. Um, Josh, Building and Grounds, Finance, Negotiations. Steven, Building and Grounds, Finance, Negotiations. Sarah, I have you on Community Engagement, Negotiations, and Personnel. And Kim, Community Engagement, Personnel, and Policy. Dusset, Lenny, um, Negotiations, Personnel, Policy. I'm on Building and Grounds and Finance. And then we have two new positions. The Clarendon one position would be Personnel, Policy, and Community Engagement. And the new, uh, the second personnel would be, or second, Clarendon position would be Community Engagement, Personnel, and Policy. So.
Help me, help me, because I missed something.
The, the first Clarendon one, as I'm calling it, would be Personnel, Policy, and Community Engagement. And actually, the second Clarendon position would be the same.
So who's, who's, uh, heavy on committees? Is anybody on four?
No.
No, okay.
No, and I thought there was somebody who was only on.
Are you only on two, Kara?
I'm only on two.
Two?
You're the chair, though.
Gray's on four still?
No, I took him off, Community Engagement.
Oh, I didn't. That's, that's the problem. I didn't take Gray off of Community Engagement.
Yeah, I think I'm, I, I think I'm only on three now.
Yeah, we took you off Community Engagement, I think. Gray, 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 Gray. I thought I had. I have Building and Grounds, Finance, and Policy for Gray.
Okay, great. Is anybody else on four? No?
No, I think we're all, I think we're all good.
So you've got, you've potentially two new Clarendon members and two committees each?
Yeah.
Puts us, okay, in good shape, and I think in good town representation on each.
Yeah, I do think we do have good representation. Of course, Tinmath, you know, what are you going to do?
I mean, I would gladly go back on the policy, but.
Josh, are you BNG Chair? Is that what, what came to pass?
Yeah, I'm BNG Chair.
Steven is still Finance Chair. Um, Josh, are you, are you still Negotiation Chair, too? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Community Engagement, we haven't reorganized, right?
Haven't reorganized.
Personnel is still Len. Policy is reorganization next week, or did that happen? No, it's next week.
They didn't have a quorum, I don't think.
Okay, so next week?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, I think I'm up to date now.
Okay, I know, it got a little confusing there.
Does Sarah mean to be raising her hand?
Sarah, do you have your hand up? I can't hear you.
She didn't mean to. I can see her.
Okay, you can read her lips. Alright. Okay, so.
Sorry.
That's okay. Alright, we're up to board goals. Oh, teacher appreciation planning. Cover your ears, ladies. I, um, oh, no, that's fine. It's not that exciting. Um, I explored having pre-printed teacher appreciation cards, so that we could at least acknowledge all of our teachers, staff, um, including bus drivers and um, maintenance, uh, staff. And we can do that for less than $300. So I don't know if I need a motion to spend that money. I mean, I don't know where it would come out of. It would just have to come out of maybe the administrative budget?
You don't need a motion to do that. You would, as a board, approve any of those expenditures in the pay orders, like we normally do.
Okay.
It's a small enough amount, and it would come from a supply line, so it's budgeted for those types of things, so.
Okay.
You just need to agree, uh, kind of by consensus, what you want to do, and how you want to do it.
So I guess I'm asking for the board to, um, approve ordering those cards, having them printed. Um, and, you know, they, they're not individually signed. I think, um, we said we'd need over 200 and.
It's about 210-ish or something.
And, you know, the logistics of getting everybody to personally sign that, but if I.
I've got it in the past, where we did, did sign, we, we wrote personal notes, like, I mean, like, we wrote, like.
Twenty each, kind of, yeah.
You know, that's how we did it, the two years before the, before we stopped. And we kind of was like, you know, I did everybody in Tinmath, and then, you know, Clarendon broke up, and then Wallingford broke up. You know?
Is that?
I'm always in favor of that style versus generic, but.
Okay, and when is teacher appreciation?
May.
It's in May, so if we.
It's early May.
So I could, um.
Yeah, May 5th.
I could purchase the cards and then disseminate them at the next board meeting, if we're in person?
Yeah, I, what we, we, we did ask for, like, a breakdown, um, and I can't remember who provided, like, it was, Jody had it, gave it to us, but I don't know if she's the one who generated it. Unless, but basically, like, these are the, this is the personnel that works in each school, so like, and then we broke it up based on that.
But did everybody sign every card? I'm sorry, Jody, I was just curious, did everybody?
No.
Sign every card? So you only signed the cards in the school, but what about Mill River? Then, who signed?
Uh, Clarendon and Wallingford split that up last time I.
And I think each card only had one signature. So board members signed the cards that they did themselves, so it wasn't that everybody had a card signed by all of the board.
Correct.
As a member of the community, still, can I offer a thought?
Sure.
Um, teachers love food. Uh, perhaps a way to expedite this would be, instead of individual cards for each person, one card signed by everybody per building with a basket of food. That way, everybody sees a card, we've all signed it, assuming they'll sign it. And people would get some sort of snacks, which they would appreciate perhaps more than a card in the moment.
We can, we can.
That might be an easier way to accomplish the same thing.
That's a good idea.
Take some of that funds and put it towards some quality food, and something that kid people can take with them, and, you know, feel appreciated throughout the day.
And we can check with buildings. Typically, that would be something a building might do. They would do a luncheon. So, you know, we would check with principals and say, like, hey, are you doing something like that? You know, and try and make sure, you know, we don't duplicate efforts, but I think food is always appreciated.
Right.
Even if they're breakfast, and they do a luncheon, I mean, yeah.
Lenny?
Yeah, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, so it goes for five days. Um, so I think the idea of food is tremendous. So I think if you coordinate with the, each of the schools, if they're doing something individually, sometimes the parent-teacher associations did it.
Yeah, they pitch in a lot of places, too.
Yeah, and so, but, but what I'm saying is, if they do one day, then, you know, could we do, uh, bagels and cream cheese and fruit another day, kind of thing? I mean, just to, so that there's something, almost every. And I think the food idea is.
Just a thought.
No, it's, yeah, no, I'm writing them all down.
Yeah, that's, that's all I got for this.
I agree. Um, it just feels like a more sincere gesture or something, I don't know.
Okay.
And like you said, everybody likes having a snack.
Um.
I, I work at GE, and we've, we've done, we do Christmas cards every year, that every member of, of the salary workforce signs a card for, like, 1,200 people.
Wow.
And those efforts, like, it's a huge effort to sign all those cards. It would be smaller here, but people just throw those cards in the trash. I mean, it's not something somebody keeps as a keepsake, close to their heart, because.
Well, and I must say, the sandwiches that were provided for us at Mill River, when we were doing the superintendent search, were outstanding. I'll put that plug in, too.
Yeah, if we did that at five schools, I'd have to talk to Stan to see if we actually have funding to do that.
Yeah, because I did talk to Brian, and that's where we, that's where I started, was with, um, you know, buying lunch for everybody, and we did feel like the cost of that.
Yeah, and I'm saying.
We don't have a budget for it, is the bottom line of that, but whether we can.
I, I was just talking about Mill River.
Yep.
If, if the cafeteria folks at Mill River, the food services can provide for Mill River, can services provide, like, for Wallingford came through food services.
Well, yeah, it's all the same.
The schools, instead of, I'm not saying Mill River take care of everybody.
No, no.
Well, I think the, the tricky part of it is, if, if the board, if the board were to say, we want to do something like that everywhere, uh, the, the accounts that we would look at are really small. Uh, and that's why it tends to be that the schools do those things, because the schools have more funding. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we, we can absolutely work with principals, and we can see what they're thinking about doing. We can see if we can kind of supplement that. Um, but if we provided a lunch at each school, I'd really have to go to Stan and say, do we have that in, in a line? That's a district line, which I don't know that we do. We don't have it in the board budget. I a hundred percent know that. So we would look at, what do we have in our district, you know, administrative lines, and, you know, might not be able to make that work. But, you know, we can, we can look and have those conversations and see, absolutely.
supplemental is fine. I mean, I just think we need to look at that.
Okay, Sarah?
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think that we have to provide a lunch. I think if we provided for each school some kind of big, lanky basket, that was full of, like, desserts or sweets. I mean, I can make it for everybody. I'm going to do that.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say is that we could actually, I don't think it has to be a full meal. I think it was more like what Lynn was saying, candy and cookies, and just a big basket that's, depending on the size of the school. And obviously, it has to be enough pieces that everybody can get some.
Okay.
But, I mean, I'm happy to donate some labor and, and materials on that. I don't think it has to be super expensive, just a basket.
Okay, so where are we at? So we're going to see if we can come up with a small budget and, um, just get a, one card for each school that we all sign. Um, and then, that's what I, that's where I think we're landing. Am I, does that sound like where we're at?
Yeah.
Anybody on, up there, have any other thoughts about it? So if it's okay with the board, I'll follow up on that, and can I communicate with them via email? Is that?
With whom?
The rest of the board.
The board?
As to what?
You're, I would say, you're not, you're not discussing board action.
Yeah, no.
So I think that's, I mean, you're, if you're having a conversation around what color stationery should we have, I.
Big decision.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't think that's no, that's nothing that's going to come to the board for action. And I think that's usually my ruler for, should we be discussing this not in public? Yeah.
Alright.
It's reasonable to just discuss what the findings are, and, and then not put off any decisions until the meeting in two weeks.
Yeah.
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 Okay. Alright, I will follow up. I'll, if the board's okay, I will follow up with Brian and the principals, as to. I think I've got some good ideas tonight. Thank you, Dave. You've already earned your keep. You've already earned your keep. All right.
And just so folks know, because I do think it has been a good bit of time since we've looked at these board goals, the last time around, because we had decided that every, every two months or so, we were going to look at progress on goals or board education. We had spent, the last thing we did was board education in January, so we actually have not looked at our board goals or talked about progress on our goals since November. So I do think it's important for folks to be reminded that this is, recognition and appreciation of staff is one small piece of goals that the board set for the year. So I think Carol had suggested, can we look at these goals again, maybe in later April when we have a full board, or maybe early May when we have a full board, so we can really dive in and think about, are there things we've forgotten and missed and not come back to?
Yep.
Because I think we've gotten into a reasonable pattern of at least quarterly trying to make sure we haven't forgotten something. So, sorry, I'll be quiet now.
No, that's, no, 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 that's good. Yeah, I think once we have our board filled out, then we can maybe review them and see what we've, what we need to work on.
Josh, go.
For new people and people that are interested in, if you want to look at the board goals, it's on the, on our, the district webpage, just under School Board on the drop down, there's goals, so you can click on it and it goes right to it.
Yep.
That's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on board goals? Okay, Wallingford Transfer Request.
Yep.
What is that?
So it's the time of year where purchase orders are...
Oh, right, I know what it is.
Are wrapping up, so we ask staff to have purchase order requests in by a certain date to give us enough time to process and receive, because believe it or not, if we put in an order, let's say mid-May, if we put an order in and there's a delay and it shows up July 5th, we can't pay for it out of this year's budget. We have to issue a new PO and pay for it out of next year's budget.
Right.
So we have some timelines that we have to follow to make sure that we're not creating some record-keeping nightmares for ourselves. Once that date has passed, what our principals tend to do is they go, hey, do we have some funding that we had intentions to use but we haven't used? Are there things that are, that are worth, worth doing with some of this funding? So sometimes we'll get requests this time of year as we approach the end to make sure that we're not letting that funding go to waste. So Wallingford had a, a good bit of funding in their Student Activities account that was set aside largely for winter sports. So over the years at Wallingford, winter sports has taken on slightly different forms and depending on how you do those programs, they can be more or less cost efficient. So this is something that we don't quite have the opportunity to use, our winter sports have completed and we have a balance left in the fund there. Phil is asking for approval from the board to transfer those to library, media, periodicals, and then elementary specialty program supplies for piano tuning, and then Wallingford staff travel to cover folks going to trainings. So those are three items that are, I think, pretty, pretty reasonable as far as they're more closer to directly supporting students, which was the intention of the Student Activities and Dues Fund. So you're not seeing Phil say, hey, I want to move this to facilities, or hey, I want to move this to admin supplies. So I think he's trying to do a good job of keeping it close to an intended purpose, which is supporting students, so. These are things that we bring to the board, because whenever we transfer, we want to do that publicly, because folks vote on a budget and when we make changes, we want to make sure we're doing that above board and we're not doing funny things with our funds that folks don't know we're doing, if that makes sense. So I'd ask for a motion to, to approve the transfer of those funds as outlined in the letter.
I make a motion to approve the transfer of the funds as outlined in the aforementioned letter.
Second. Josh, any discussion, questions for Brian about that? Okay, all in favor?
Awesome, thank you.
All right, committee reports. Personnel.
Hi there, we met this evening, and so we have a couple contracts that we need to take a look at, which I will be able to sign shortly. Here they are. Okay, first, I'd like to make a motion that we offer Amber Hernandez a teaching contract, 1.0 full-time equivalency for grade seven through 12, science.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
I can second that.
I'm seconded. Discussion, Brian, do you want to talk a little bit about that position?
Yeah, I'll share a little bit. Who was the second, sorry?
Kim.
Kim, thank you. So as Bronson was mentioning earlier, our science offerings have been something that we've been looking at for, for a little while and talking about, and we have an opportunity where we have a vacancy that historically had been somewhat of a math position, depending on how many years back you go. It was kind of business tech, it was kind of computers, we had a dual-licensed person. But most recently, it's been a math position. Sean has been working with departments to figure out what makes the most sense for scheduling for next year and thinking about those science electives, the ability to offer those. We have a wonderful opportunity to hire a science teacher to try and support those offerings better. So this is a vacancy that is in the budget for next year. So not a new position, but just a rethinking of a position we've had at the high school.
Are we sacrificing any math offerings?
I do not believe that we are cutting down on offerings. I don't believe so.
Well, I guess it was a vacant position anyway, so...
Well, at this point, we did have folks, we did have math offerings this year, looking at scheduling and class sizes, I believe we were able to offer pretty close to what we offer now.
With the addition of a science elective or two?
Yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Secondly, I'd make a motion if we offer a contract to Karen Castle, 1.0 full-time equivalency as a K6 classroom teacher. Can I make that motion?
Second, anybody? Ned? Okay, and, and that position is where, Brian?
That is Wallingford 5th grade, Karen is fantastic, she's been with the district for a good bit of time, she's done stints as a long-term sub-special education, she's actually currently the long-term sub in that 5th grade classroom. So wonderful that we're able to hire her full-time into that position officially for next year.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Next, we have a two-week notice from Adam DiBertolo, who's offering his, or offered his two-week notice, his final date being April 1st, 2025, which was yesterday, and I would make a motion that we accept this notice.
A second.
All those in favor? Just as an update, I will be sending Adam, and we talked a little bit about it in Personnel this evening earlier, I will be sending a notice to Adam, asking if he would like to have an exit interview. I also sent an email to the individual who we accepted their resignation at our last meeting, and I have not heard back, but I just want folks to know that I did offer that, and I'll continue to pursue that as we go along. And I, our next meeting would be May something.
Good question.
What is the date of May? The 7th?
7th, yeah. Josh, beat me to it.
Sounds like the plan. So our next Personnel Committee meeting will be May 7th.
6:00 or 6:30, Len?
I'm sorry?
6:00 or 6:30?
6:00.
Okay.
Because we still have, oh no, I guess we don't. Yeah, let's say 6:00 so that we don't feel as pressured.
Yeah, no, fair, fair.
Here?
Yes, here.
That's it.
Oh, do you want to do admin contracts, Len?
Also, were we going to talk about the health department?
I think Carol recommended we do, put that under transact other legal business.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, but the, Lenny, the administration, administrative contracts?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion? What do we need for that?
Uh, yeah, we would need motion to approve contract renewals.
I'm not sure exactly how you want to approach this, just in terms of how much should be in public.
Yeah.
Meeting and whether we need to go into executive session or what, I don't know.
So I can tell you, publicly, we can discuss a lot about the process. The only thing that would be appropriate to discuss in executive session would really be the, let me look at the language exactly.
Specific salaries?
The evaluation. No, salaries are public. It's only the evaluation piece. So if I tell you somebody's doing a good job or a bad job, that's something we talk about in executive session. But I can share with you all the details of the process and all of that publicly, which I think is actually a good thing to do.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
So why don't you do that?
Okay, I will do that. So a cup, three and a half or so, almost three and a half years ago, maybe a little over three years ago, we had a good conversation about the process that we had in place for administrative evaluation and supervision. And we talked about some ways that we could make that process better align with how we do that work with all of our other certified positions, so our teaching staff. And we, we sat down in the summer after that conversation and we crafted a plan that is shared with the board in the materials that outlines how we go about goal setting. Now, when we have returning staff, we do that goal setting at the end of the academic year, leading into the beginning of the next year. And then we, we identify an evaluator for that administrator and a supervisor for that administrator. So Jody Assistant Superintendent and I Superintendent, we share some of those responsibilities. Most of our folks, I'm going to be the evaluator, but there are some folks that Jody is the evaluator, because we have, what, about 14 individuals? So from our Buildings and Grounds head to our principals, our assistant principals, our athletic director, all of those folks, we split those duties up. One of us meets with them twice a month, one of us meets with them once a month. So they're having three check-in meetings a month where we tie back into our supervision evaluation process. So we set those goals either at the end of the year for returning folks or at the beginning of the year for new folks, and we check in three times a month to, to try and identify progress on those goals, to give some sort of coaching for folks if they're struggling with their goals, highlight successes. So that's an ongoing conversation that we have throughout the year. We have notes documents that we keep for all of those meetings, so that is, there's a record of that. And we get to January and we start doing mid-year reviews. So those individuals have a sense in January how things are going and what to expect when it comes time for spring and summative evaluations. In, in the past, that was a process that tended to be done once a year, so it was done annually, and we felt like it was really hard to do that annually and be able to come to the board in good faith and say, we know how this person is doing right now. So we try to close that gap and, and do that work more frequently. So in January, we give folks their mid-year. What I bring to you is, is as we're getting on the cusp of the summative, so we've met with our folks, we've given them their mid-year review, and then summatives are being prepared. So at this point, I feel like we have pretty strong background to bring to the board to identify who, who we're intending to renew and what length of contract we're intending to renew them at. In the packet that I gave you, it gives a rationale for one year versus two years. Typically, with new folks, we think about a two-year contract, and the great thing about that two-year contract is year one can be figuring out how things are going and where you are and progress on your goals. If we're struggling, year two can be a very intensive, let's focus on the problems and figure out if this is a good fit or not. If we have folks that, that in their second year are struggling, we can offer a one-year contract to give them that year to figure out, you know, how are things going, let's keep an eye on it, and let's see if growth and progress are being made. So we will typically be only offering one or two-year contracts, and that's what we've done for the last bit of time. So that's a little bit of a rationale of why we do that. Tonight, we have a handful of folks that are coming up for renewal, about half of our individuals, because with those two-year contracts, we have some that are up this year, we have some that are up next year. And we are asking for the board to make a motion to approve two-year contracts for, that's the last page of your packet there, Kim Minieri, Athletic Director, Stanley Plaussek, Business Manager, Jody Stewart, Rock Assistant Superintendent, Coral Stone, Director of Student Services, Karen Stannard, Assistant Principal, and Phil Hall, Principal at Wallingford. The one thing I didn't go over is salary. We had done some work previous years to try and make sure that our salaries across the district lined up with each other, because we've had some disparities in the past where you would say like, well, this person seems to be paid higher than this person, and looking at experience and things like that, they didn't make sense. So we have some salary ranges that are in your packet. We also look at years of experience as an administrator, but then whether you have a large, medium, or small school or responsibility. So you might say something like the Athletic Director is a district-level position, but it's not the same size responsibility that your Head of Buildings and Grounds might be, or that your Business Manager might be. So we gave a rationale for, for that, so that you can look at those salaries and pretty easily see that the responsibility level and years of experience are pretty well-aligned. So we don't have any need for an adjustment this year, if that makes sense. Questions on any of that? Or does somebody want to make a motion and then discussion? Or do you want to wait till we, if there's a need for anybody to ask for executive session to hear about details of how these individuals are doing? How do folks want to approach that?
I, I would make a motion if I might.
Okay.
And then we can have a discussion to offer Karen Stannard a two-year contract as Assistant Principal of Mill River, to offer Phil Hall a two-year contract as Principal of Wallingford, to offer Jody Ruck a two-year contract as Assistant Superintendent, to offer Stan a two-year contract as Business Manager, to offer Coral Stone a two-year contract as Director of Student Services, and to offer Kim Minieri a two-year contract as Athletic Director. And I would say, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
And a second?
Second from Stephen.
Stephen?
A second.
Okay, go, Lenny.
And, well, and my discussion would be, we have listed on our handout salaries for the first year.
Correct.
And I would say that the salaries in the second year of these And I would say that the salaries in the second year of these contracts would be determined by future budget considerations.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you for that clarification. And the, the compensation for these folks is, just to add to that, what we discussed in Finance Committee built into the budget and tried to loop personnel in along the way. So this is a fairly, I think, easier year, less complicated, but great to note that this is a one-year salary and we have to budget for the second year of these contracts and we'll do that work in the fall.
And I would also assume that means, for example, with Sean, just taking Sean as an example, his, he'll be in the second year of a two-year contract and that money will have been budgeted already?
Yeah, let me make sure I understand you correctly. So, so for everybody, Sean Robinson, high school principal, he is not up for renewal right now. He is in year one of a contract. Year two for him, next year, his salary for next year is based on what we budgeted in the fall with Finance Committee. Is that what you were getting at, Lynn?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's all I wanted to clarify is to make sure that
Yeah.
Those folks that are in their second year,
Yeah.
That's in that last column
Yeah.
Under fiscal year 26.
Correct, correct. And that's something that, we don't need a specific motion from the board on those because that's what's been budgeted and that's within the contract language, but great to identify. And I think, always want the board to see all those numbers in one place at one time.
Yeah, I agree.
And even, even when we, when we talk about evaluation stuff, I bring you that handful of folks, those six individuals for renewals, I show you evaluation details on everybody because I don't want you to wait two years to see how somebody's doing, if that makes sense.
And, and I also, as long as we're in discussion, I also want to thank Brian because the change in how we evaluate our administrators and it's a huge help to the board as we go through this to understand that these folks are being evaluated on a regular basis. And so when we're asked for a two-year contract at X amount of dollars in the first year, et cetera, that, that, it makes sense to us where necessarily in the past it did not.
That was one of our first big projects. And I think I, you know, I'm proud of doing that work because I think that was great collaborative work with the board. I think working on our hiring procedures for administrators was another great collaborative effort with the board. I think looking at our organizational chart and trying to make some of those pieces clear was another great collaborative project. So, you know, some, some good things that I think the board supported and contributed to a lot too, you know, not, not just work we did. But thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from any other board members? Okay. Call the question, Lenny.
Okay, so all those in favor of offering two-year contracts to all of the above who have been mentioned? Aye? Opposed? Okay, there you have it. Is that what you need, Brian? Is that good enough?
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, policy. Is there someone who wants to speak for policy regarding, I know you guys didn't reorg and you don't have a official chair, but to talk about this second read? Anybody?
Well, there's, there's not a whole lot to discuss at this point. We have a meeting coming up next week with a pretty impactful agenda, I'd say. We're talking about a cell phone ban that has been kind of unconsideration for quite a while and a lot of inquiring into various clients about, you know, what people think about it. But other than that, there's not a whole lot to report.
What do we do about this policy? F8, second read?
Yes, we do have a policy that was attached in our materials. That went into the Rutland Herald for second read. So this evening, the board can make a motion to adopt that policy.
Okay.
And, and I think it's important, and Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, but this policy is determined to be necessary by the Vermont School Board Association.
Yeah.
And we did not have it previously, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, and so basically what we did is we took the School Board Association's policy and put our heading and information.
And just for the public, this is the student freedom of expression policy.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
So I guess I would make a motion to move the student freedom of expression policy F8 to a second reading?
It already.
Okay, so let me just approve it?
Yeah, to adopt.
Yeah, we're ready to adopt it.
So I'll make a motion to adopt it.
Taking a second back.
Okay, Kim, second. Okay, any discussion? I think Gray kind of addressed, or somebody addressed it just now. Must be getting late. Okay, all in favor? All right, so the, that policy is now adopted.
Excellent. And next meeting is Tuesday, the 8th, 5:30.
Okay. And all these committee meetings are hybrid, so just so everybody knows, although we'll talk about community engagement. Building and grounds, who's in charge of that? Oh, Josh.
I'm in charge of it now. So we had a meeting last week where we did reorg.
Well, we lost yours.
I somehow magically went back to you. So I was voted chair of that committee. We talked about just going through our goals again and making sure they were aligned because we had a decent amount of new people on that committee now, so that's great. One of the things that we were talking about specifically is like we had come up with this kind of list of projects that potentially could be done. And we talked about how we can track that over time in an efficient way so that we all can keep, keep it in our minds of how much we're spending, how much is getting pulled out of that fund. And so I think that's going to work out really well. I have, we didn't get, did we have paperwork sent in our packet for the things we were going to talk about? And we were going to, I didn't think we had them, because we voted on bringing the bid for the high school gym.
Right.
And for the diesel pump for the buses.
Oh, I, I thought, I thought we weren't doing the high school gym yet. I thought that was still in discussion.
We were going to, we were just going to bring, we wanted, we thought it was good enough to bring to the board. But what we talked about in finance about like how we were going to pay for it was generally what we were, we didn't know. But then we were just going to bring it to the board just so Tim could
Yeah.
Do that. But if we don't have it
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't clear that was happening.
For the next meeting. Just fine.
We do need to move somewhat fast if we want it to happen even
Next year.
The summer of '26.
Right, so we don't have the bid in writing right now.
We can, we can bring that 16th.
Yeah, we'll bring that, we'll add that to the agenda for the 16th.
And then the same for the diesel pump?
The pump, yeah.
Josh, did we talk about the Clarendon parking lot also?
Well, that was, that was the one that we wanted, that was the one we wanted more information on about
That's right.
What was the best use of, if, how best to deal with the parking lot?
Yep.
Yep.
I forgot, you're right.
We'd like to do that more often. And yeah, and we'll talk, we can talk about it more, but the high school gym forum is, it can no longer be refinished.
Right.
We're going to be talking about that some more.
Yep.
And the pump for the buses at the high school also has, needs to be revised. Aside that, that's pretty much it that we talked about, except for making sure we're really aware of how much we have in the buildings fund, just so that we're all aware of that. The next meeting would be the last weekend, the last Monday, so I think it's the 28th, is that right? 28th and
Five.
Five.
28th, okay, great.
I'll speak to that, only I'm not going to be on that committee, but I will be at the next meeting, which is going to be April 16th. There's going to be community conversations followed by community conversation or community engagement committee meeting. It will be at Wallingford, so it will be in person only.
We will make that clear on the agenda.
Right.
So thank you for that.
So I will, I'll send, I'll try and do the agenda and also if, I'll put out a little blurb because Gray, we did talk about having cell phone policy as part of that, kind of the featured topic of the community conversation. I don't know, you know, it's elementary school, I don't know how many people will get there, but you know, I will do a little blurb for Front Porch Forum and for the school newsletters, just kind of highlighting that it's happening. Does anybody else have any input into that? Okay. So we'll see everybody on the 16th for that meeting.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Did you say six?
Six.
No, no, the time.
Oh, 6 o'clock for the conversation and 6:30 for the committee. Thank you for checking. Negotiations. Josh, again.
They're still negotiating and there's, there's meetings with the union already scheduled, so we're moving along.
All right, and when the new members come on board, we can let them know those times. Okay, finance, pay orders. Stephen?
Yes, we've got a payroll warrant for March 28th in the amount of $662,629.49 and April 1st in the amount of $7,437.95 for a total of $670,067.44. I'll make a motion to approve these payroll warrants, has read?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm guessing that's everyone.
Yeah.
And accounts payable warrants, we have general fund in the amount of $138,908.39, general fund in the amount of $14,714.27, ASP in the amount of $1,007.33, and lunch fund at $40,347.69 for a total of $194,977.68. And then student activities, we have $6,834.47 from Mill River, $138.95 from Shrewsbury, $500 from Tinmouth, and $188.11 from Wallingford in the amount of $7,661.53. I'll make a motion to approve these accounts payable warrants.
I'll second it.
Great.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, bye-bye.
Stephen, do you want to just report out real quick about your finance meeting and anything maybe out of that meeting that happened?
We did reorg this past week. I am the Chair of Finance again, and we got an audit report from Stan, which we heard about tonight. So that was much of our meeting. We had some time kind of talking about Buildings and Grounds-related finance as well. Pretty much what the last meeting was about. We've got another meeting, I'm guessing, scheduled for the 28th as well. We're going to have the same night as Buildings and Grounds, is that correct, everyone?
That's tentatively what we talked about, yeah. So 6 PM on that same evening.
Yep, 6 PM on May 28th. And we'll be looking at some kind of legislative things coming down the pipe and how that's going to help frame our discussions for budget building for fiscal year 27 moving forward.
Yep.
Before a little bit of a, a little bit of a summer break.
All right.
I think that's all I've got, unless I missed something.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, transact other legal business. So, do you want me to talk about this, Lenny, or I guess I will? Yeah.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay, so
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, we, the presentation was made to us in the Personnel Committee and we agreed as in the committee that it should probably come to the board for them to hear it as well, and we took no action.
Right. So Amy came, Amy Riddlin is on RN, right, is our health
Health Services Supervisor.
Supervisor. In the last week or so, it sounds like last few weeks, they've had a couple of students who have been diagnosed with type 1 diabetes, they're young children, and they need a lot of monitoring of their, of their blood sugar, et cetera. They're not able to independently do that. Amy reported, and she's right here, she can jump in, jump in if I say something wrong, but she reported that they currently do not have the staff to adequately meet the needs of these students. Ideally, in RN, a full-time registered nurse, school nurse would be ideal. However, they would be able to make it through the end of the school year at least with LPN, which is the equivalent of a paraeducator. And so I guess what we're asking the board is, we do have an unfilled, well, we just had a paraeducator resignation and we may even have an unfilled paraeducator position in the budget. I'm not sure about that, but
Possibly.
Possibly. So what we're asking the board to consider is to use that unfilled, or that unfilled position and transfer it to a LPN position so that Amy can get help at least through the end of the school year to support these students. Is that, Amy, does that?
That's accurate, yes, because they are in different locations.
They're in different, that's what makes it hard, they're in two locations and they just don't have the staff to
And, and a tiny bit of background on that, that request, and Stan might jump in and say it better than I can say it, but the challenge, the challenge with staffing is that we can't add a position to the budget because the budget's been approved by voters. So we, we legally have to work within the budget that's been approved. Now, what Carol is mentioning is, well, we, we have a support staff FTE that we could hire for differently, so that's not a change in the budget that's been voted, that's a change of title of position, if that makes sense to folks, the difference there. Stan, do you want to correct anything I said or say it better?
That, well, that's fine, you know, and, you know, when these things pop up in past practice, you know, the board has always asked us to find money for these positions, but obviously but obviously, you know, we're a ways out for next year, so there's nothing that I can pinpoint to the budget for next year that would be able to say, oh, we can use that money to, to pay for that position.
Okay.
So, Brian, I understand what you're saying.
I'm not sure what Brian...
Hold on a sec, Gray, go ahead, Stan.
No, I, I, I'm just, I'm, no, I'm not aware, but Brian mentioned that there's a, you know, a unfilled para position. If there is an unfilled para position, you know, it has been passed, but the board might use that position to pay for another purpose for those, for those funds.
Okay, so, all right.
Thank you, Stan.
Thanks, Stan, Gray.
Yeah, I just understand what Brian was saying, basically, we would take the budget position and change the job description of that position.
Right. Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So I guess at this point, we would need a motion to approve using the support staff to fund a LPN.
Yeah, approve, I wonder if it's clearer to get a motion to approve, approve hiring an LPN instead of a paraprofessional.
Okay.
Is that reasonable?
Yep. Does someone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve hiring an LPN instead of a paraprofessional.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Okay, and a second?
Steven? Yep.
You got a second, man?
Yeah, Steven, I saw.
Okay, discussion, Ned?
I was just wondering what the breakdown is of the, the nursing and the health staff now, per school, is it...
Absolutely. So right now, the model that we have at Mill River is not a classic model, you know, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that you have a full-time licensed registered nurse, who's also licensed through the AOE in every single building, regardless of the school, of the student population. Right now at Mill River, with a, with a school nurse lead in addition. Right now, we do have a school nurse lead, that's myself, we have one registered nurse, licensed school nurse at Clarendon, four days a week, who travels to Shrewsbury one day a week. We have one full-time licensed practical nurse, who's at the high school, who I typically support heavily, because it needs it, it calls for it, and she's not licensed to practice independently. So part of my job is supervision of that site, as well as one full-time LPN who works four days a week at Wallingford and one day a week at Timoth. And so the four days a week at our mountain schools, where there is no nurse of any kind, when I am able, when I have been able, I do a lot of traveling, I'm driving all over the place all the time. Also, we have a couple of amazing administrative assistants, who are trained in CPR and first aid, and they do some education with me every year to help support them, and they communicate with us by phone. It's, it's not ideal, but it works, and they are wonderful, and, you know, it really depends on the, the strength of your staff. And we have a couple of really strong staff members, which is great, but when things like this crop up, and you are not a fully staffed, appropriately fully staffed district, you can see how over the course of, you know, like, six weeks, these two diagnoses just implode.
Yeah.
And, and you realize that you can't function safely, and that's really dangerous.
When I was reading your letter, I don't remember what day it was, yesterday, the day before, I actually thought it was kind of crazy that there wasn't a full-time nurse at every school.
I think a lot of people don't know that, I think, I, I love our LPNs, I want to say that, you know, publicly, they are wonderful, they are very strong at what they do, but I think a lot of people misunderstand when they hear the word nurse, there's a difference between a registered nurse, who is all, and a licensed school nurse, we have, we're duly licensed, and have a lot of continuing education for that role, and all the specific things that come along with being a school nurse versus a nurse in the hospital, which most of us have been before anyway, but still, there's a lot more that comes along with it, all the social-emotional needs, so many things, endless. Where a licensed practical nurse, although the nickname is nurse, it's a one-year certificate, it is not a degree, they're not licensed, like I said, to practice independently without supervision of an RN. They do an amazing job, but I think a lot more is expected of them when people hear the term nurse, and so I think a lot of people are actually shocked that that is our model, because they don't know it, because they hear the nickname, and they think it's okay.
Any other discussion or questions, Lenny?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is, is the amount of money that was designated for the paraeducator sufficient to pay for an LPN?
Great question. Hard, hard to answer, because it depends who you hire. You know, if somebody's at the top of the salary schedule or the bottom of the salary schedule, so I'd, I'd say, you know, close enough.
Okay, I mean, I, I just, I just hate to say, okay, we're, we're going to be fine, and then find out down the road, maybe we're not quite...
So I think the, and what I told personnel was, and Stan, Stan's going to yell at me, maybe, we'll see, but what I told personnel was, the dollars aren't what we're as worried about, it's the FTEs, so the full-time equivalencies, so a 1.0 support staff position, a 1.0 support staff position. You know, the dollars may be higher or lower, but I think that's, if we've got the FTE, that's the far more important thing, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, but good, good...
But I, I just wanted to make it clear...
Great, great question.
But it may not be just the one-to-one swap.
Yeah.
Josh, can I ask a community member a question?
Let's let Josh go, and then Dave will let you jump in.
I just was wondering, what was the, so this is not the first time that, like, a young student has been diagnosed with diabetes, and so what would have happened in the past? Because we've had this style for a long time, right?
We have, we have. And right now, with the two new diagnoses, we're actually about, we're 50% above the national average for type 1 diabetics in our population right now. Previously, the majority of our diabetics are independent and at the high school. So although they still need nursing support for lots of things, they are primarily independent. As, as kids grow, they learn more about their diagnosis, depends on their cognition and ability, and they start to take over. Usually, by the time they graduate high school, they are fully independent. Somewhere in the beginning of high school years, most of our diabetics, in collaboration with their parents via cellphone, do a lot of independent care, and, and that's great, and we're still there to support them. When they're young, preschool and primary grade levels, 100% of that care needs to be given by a nurse, and that includes a lot of things. It also includes technology, we have Bluetooth devices, where we're monitoring their blood sugar every minute of every day. They have, for a period of time, they usually have manual insulin, their diagnosis is more volatile in the first few years when they're young, so their numbers can be up, down, all over the place, so you're, you're fighting all day long to try to keep them in this range, and not let them have hypoglycemia or hyperglycemia, which they could end up in a diabetic coma or diabetic shock. So, you know, you're looking at a life and death situation every single day, and, you know, you're checking urine ketones to make sure that you don't have them going into DKA, you're, you're constant, you're, you're also watching every single thing that they eat, you have to count every single carbohydrate that they eat, sometimes that takes 20 minutes with a book, and, you know, resources to find out exactly what carb level is in everything, and then you also have to make up for it on the other end, because the way diabetes works, you give the insulin first, and you're really hoping they eat everything on that plate, and when they're young, they don't always do that, so you have to be there the whole entire time, make up for it on the other end, so that takes a lot of staff time to do all of these things. We have not had, I've been, this is my fourth year, we have not had a diabetic in this young of an age category since I've been here. We did have one go through one of our elementary schools, which, she was in an unusual situation where her parents were incredibly available at all times, and they made a choice when that child started, knowing that that school did not have a full-time nurse, they made a choice that they were going to duly monitor her, and they communicated with the nurse, the LPN, that was in that building, probably eight to 10 times a day by phone, giving orders and having, and they were managing her care. It still took a lot of nursing hours, but it didn't take nursing decision-making, and, and those orders often change daily, too, there's a lot of math calculation that we have to do to get to the amount of insulin that we're going to administer, so when you're doing that, you need to be completely uninterrupted, you can't have phones ringing or be, be doing another job at the same time. You're calculating fractions of, of units of insulin, and it's very dangerous to have distraction or be expected to be doing other jobs at the same time. So when we're responsible for all of those details, it's really important that that person be a trained nurse or an LPN who is in very close communication with a nurse, not expecting it to be one of our administrative assistants, who's also answering the door, serving lunch, and, and answering 50 phone calls a day, and sometimes subbing in a classroom, you know, it's just, it's not acceptable, safe care, to have somebody who's not dedicated to that role.
Thank you, Amy. Dave, did you?
Well, as, I was just curious to know, whenever you shift the position, theoretically, that other position existed for a purpose as well, so where would those other positions be, and how would the needs of those students or those classroom educators be supported?
Those would be special education paraeducators, and Coral would probably be the better person to speak to what we would be missing there, if those positions were...
Yeah, so I, I'm not sure what people are actually referring to, when you say there's, like, an unfilled position, I, I can only presume that the board is speaking about the resignation you received tonight.
Yes, correct.
That would have been for a one-to-one paraeducator for a special needs student. So, yeah, I, I guess I would have to figure that out.
Yeah, that's...
Well, I thought when we redid our budget, there were, there were positions that were funded for this year that we didn't fund for next year.
And we said, we, we weren't sure if there was another vacancy beyond that, but I see Stan popping on to tell us if there is or not.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Well, I'm not sure, Coral, what, I was going to say, what position is out there? You've got positions...
Yeah, yeah, I would have to double-check that, because...
To clarify, we're talking about this year, actually, we're not talking about next year.
Yeah, just...
Does that make sense, Stan?
Yeah, so I think, I think folks, though, I don't want to get too much into the details here, but there was a, a recent qualification just the other day of a student that needs a one-to-one para, that student came into special ed, so I don't believe that I do have any unfilled positions sitting in my side of the budget at this point.
Yeah, or un, unneeded, is that...
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't, I just, I would rather double-check that, I don't, I don't want to say anything that isn't quite accurate this evening, but I, I do think we should double-check that.
Yeah, no, fair.
Yeah.
Does Zach answer your question, David, as much as we can tonight?
Yeah, I just, I, I know that in the past, the, the board has cut a number of paraeducator positions that are unfilled, something that I have thought was very short-sighted. And I, I know when you talk about special ed and IEPs and legal obligations the district has, you can't just shuffle people in that capacity, and if you have a classroom setting where there's, you know, 24 kids, you have a small group para as well, there's real harm to those kids as well if you pull those people, so I, I'm not trying to minimize the, you know, obviously, the needs of these two students or students with type 1 diabetes, but at the same time, it's, it is a zero-sum game.
I do understand that, I do, I do just have to point out that there is a difference when it's life or death.
Don't disagree.
That's exactly...
Versus education, and I, I apologize, I just feel like I have to say that very strongly and very loudly.
Okay, so I, I just want to move it along, I, so my understanding is that we have a motion to read...
Well, I think Steven's got a hand up and Stan's...
Okay, yeah, I just want to, I just, Steven, I'll let you go, I just want to catch us up. So we have a motion to, now, what happens if that position isn't there, do we want to...
Well, I don't think it's a question of isn't there, I think it's a question of...
Is it needed?
Yeah.
It's definitely needed.
Because we, we do know we have the one position right now unfilled, 100%, we know that.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right.
I, I just wanted to ask, what is being, I'm assuming these, these weren't, you know, this week or today, these diagnoses, what is, what sort of support are these students getting now or since the diagnoses?
So these diagnoses came about a six-week period apart, maybe four weeks apart, so this has all occurred over the last six to eight weeks, and we are currently supporting with substitutes and myself, and also not allowing me to do any of the supervision or other pieces. We're leaving other schools short to support the two, the three schools, Mill River as well, Timoth and Wallingford, are, knock on wood, holding steady without any diabetics present or other chronic health conditions that absolutely have to have us there every single day. We are able, we do have some medical designees who are able to give the medications on a daily basis, but simple things like one of our nurses calling out sick, I was sick last week, the other RN was sick this week, and had one of those students not also been sick and out, I would have been frantically driving back and forth between schools, 20 minutes apart, it's not ideal, it's not safe. Our substitutes have very, we have a very limited subpool, we have two nurse substitutes, and their availability is also very limited, and, and I just got a text during this meeting that one of our nurses got called for jury duty despite the letter, lengthy letter I wrote, begging them not to take her, so that's where we're at.
Okay, I'm gonna, any more discussion, I'm gonna...
Can, can we just hear from Stan and Gray, because I'm wondering if Stan has some information around vacancies, that would be helpful.
So if you're, if we're talking about this year and funding a position for the rest of this year?
Yeah.
That would not be an issue of finding money to cover that position to the end June 30th, due to the, you know, substantial surplus that we're projecting for this year.
Yeah, okay.
So as far as next year, though, I, I don't have an answer for next year.
Yeah, we're not, we're not talking about next year right now, we're just trying to help them out.
One step at a time.
Get them through the end of this year.
Well, if it's one step at a time this year to June 30th, we're fine at finding the money.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
So, so to clarify, so sorry, I just want to make sure, because we're about to vote, so we can fund this, this LPN and also fill the paraeducator position that's about to be opened again for the education?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Stan, I'm glad you're here. Okay, all in favor? All right, and we'll get Ned's vote when he comes back in.
Yep.
Any opposed? All right, Amy, hopefully that will help you guys.
Thank you very, very much, I really appreciate it. I know it's not an easy lift, so I appreciate all your support.
We got to take care of the kids, that's why we're here. All right, agenda building.
Wallingford, next meeting, the 16th, so we would get a presentation from our Wallingford folks. We are coming up, we have a couple of things that we could look at, intervention update we typically do this time of year, pre-K or after-school, we typically do this time of year, so I could reach out to Deborah and Sarah and Teresa and try and nail down which meetings work for them for the next few meetings, if that makes sense. I heard that we want to look at high school floor bid and diesel pump.
Yep.
So I have those there. If we didn't have intervention or pre-K after-school, if their schedules didn't really work for the 16th, I would sub in our F28 student wellness update. Those are all things that are not pressing, those are just things... Those are just things that we typically do in the spring. So I would fit whichever of those in that made the most sense. Our school presentation, you know, typically those will be maybe 20, 30 minutes after we get a presentation, questions, answers. So doing that plus maybe two of those things, I think would be workable. We will also be looking at board member appointment for Clarendon. Is there anything I'm missing?
I just have a question, if I might.
Yep.
And my brain's probably failing me this time of night. Did we talk at some point about athletics update?
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. I reached out to Kim, and tonight was not a fantastic night. And knowing that we already had a pretty packed agenda with other things, we were looking at the first May meeting for that. So thank you for that, because they did not mention it.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
So my mind is still-
You're good.
Yep, yep, yep.
I would probably good, I'm just saying.
Even with the time change, then.
So, yeah, we'd get sports in early May. And we'd get a sense, a good sense of how spring's going.
All right.
Other, other things I'm missing. Thank you, Lynn.
Was the food service dinner walkthrough, was that yesterday?
Yeah, that was last Wednesday, so a week ago. And we are going to be planning to get together our committee the week of the 28th. So the board will likely see maybe action early May, late May, depending on how that goes. And we had Ned and Sarah, who were interested in being on that committee. And we were wondering if a Clarendon board member was going to be interested in joining us and helping out that week after spring break. And we'll have two new members that we can see if they'd be interested for that. Sarah, you went on the walkthroughs, right? Yep. So we're moving along.
Sarah, it's her, it's Siri.
Siri, you're not on the agenda. Does that help, Ned?
Yeah, if Sarah was there, I didn't see her face or read her lips this time, but I'll ask her if she hadn't-
I did accompany them on the walkthrough.
And totally reasonable, Ned, you can call up Sarah and have a conversation about that. That's not a problem at all.
Okay.
It was ripening, Ned, I'll tell you all about it.
And if one of the new Clarendon-
Can I just follow to that? Is there any student prep happening on that?
Yes, we do have a student who is interested. And we're going to connect them to the process to be part of that committee when it meets the week of the 28th. Great question, thank you.
And if one of the new board members doesn't want it?
Then Carol will.
Then I will.
Okay, great. So I think agenda building, we're good.
Okay, good. Do we need executive session? Anybody need one? Nope?
Okay.
Okay, we're at adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Yep.